Good morning Wichita, welcome to City Council. We are calling this meeting to order. With us today is Reverend Ben Staley of Chapel Hill United Methodist Church to provide our invocation. Following that invocation, we will have our Pledge of Allegiance. We ask that you please stand for both Reverend Staley.
Shall we pray together? Oh Lord, we thank you for the freedom that is ours that we celebrate this week. Freedom to live as you lead us to work and worship, to travel and to be all that you want us to be. And then we thank you for the resources that you give us for the life that we have to bless others. You give us food and shelter and a home and health and family and friends and then opportunities to do good and to serve one another. Now give us wisdom to follow your lead that we might be the best that we can be for using the resources and freedom that you've given us. Guide each of us and this City Council in the ways that we can use our freedom, resources, and the wisdom you give to make our world, our community, our homes to be places where love and care and faith are evident. Help us to be the best that we can be while we can be through our Lord Jesus Christ. In whose name we pray, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much Reverend Staley. Do we have approval of minutes for June 25th, 2024? Any changes or corrections? I see none.
I move to approve the minutes, June 25th.
Motion and a second, any further discussion? I see none, Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Motion passes seven zero. Madam Clerk, please call the next item.
Awards and Proclamations. For proclamations today, we have Park and Recreation Month. And for awards, we have Supplier Diversity Awards.
May please ask the Wichita Park and Recreation Department to please come forward at this time? The proclamation reads, "The city of Wichita, Kansas, founded in 1870. Whereas Parks and Recreation promotes time spent in nature, which positively impacts mental health by increasing cognitive performance and well-being and alleviating illnesses such as depression, attention deficit disorders, and Alzheimer's. Parks and Recreation encourages physical activities by providing space for sports, hiking, swimming, and other activities designed to promote active lifestyles. Their programming and educational activities such as out-of-school time programming and youth sports are critical to childhood development. Parks and Recreation increases a community's economic prosperity through increased property values, expansion of the local tax base, increased tourism, the attraction and retention of businesses, and crime reduction. Our Parks and Recreation areas ensure the ecological beauty of our community and provide a place for all to connect with nature and recreate outdoors. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Lily Wu, Mayor of the city of Wichita, Kansas, along with the Wichita City Council, do hereby proclaim the month of July 2024 as Park and Recreation Month in the city of Wichita and encourage all citizens to recognize the benefits from Parks and Recreation resources as an integral part of the Wichita community."
Good morning, I'm Katie Eddy, Management Analyst for the Park and Recreation Department. Thank you Mayor and City Council for once again allowing us to celebrate the value that our department brings to the table. We celebrate Park and Recreation Month every July, but through the promotion of physical and mental health and wellness, environmental stewardship, educational opportunities, and economic impact, the work that we do lasts all year long. The theme for this year's Park and Recreation Month is Where You Belong. We work hard to make sure we offer as much as possible so that all residents can say that they belong in Park and Rec. We offer low-cost youth and adult athletic leagues, scholarships for swimming lessons, specialized senior programming, adaptive sports leagues, special events, and over 100 parks to visit. We partner with dozens of local organizations to ensure that we can expand our reach as far as possible. When you think about Parks and Recreation, your mind probably jumps to things like summer camp, pools, green spaces. Maybe you think about your favorite playground or the place you played basketball as a kid. Perhaps you only know what you read in the news and you wonder why everyone keeps talking about pickleball. But today, I especially want to highlight the folks behind me who put in a lot of the work you may not often think about. This team is where we belong. Up here is our administrative team with representatives from Maintenance and Forestry, Golf, Recreation, Special Events, Marketing, and Financial Operations. When you think Park and Rec, you probably don't think about balancing the budget, grant writing, processing payroll, managing contracts, or answering phone calls. But that all plays a part into providing the award-winning community services that we provide. The Department of Park and Recreation reaches out to every part of the city to provide services that are essential to our community's vitality. We belong here, working hard behind the scenes to improve the community quality of life to make sure that Wichita is where you belong. Thank you.
Thank you again to our Wichita Parks and Recreation Department. At this time, we will move to the Supplier Diversity Awards. As you can see, we have several to recognize today. I am pleased to recognize city departments that have met or exceeded the 2023 Spending Goals for Emerging and Disadvantaged Business Enterprises. The city of Wichita is committed to supporting small, local businesses, including minority and women-owned businesses through the program. It provides opportunities for local vendors while increasing the vendor base for the city of Wichita. Staff use multiple strategies to facilitate small business participation in city procurement processes. This includes training on how to do business with the city and information about items the city routinely purchases. The city partners with local organizations and has a small business resource website. That website is workwith.wichita.gov. Again, that's workwith.wichita.gov. It provides information, directories, and resources supporting small businesses here in our community. In 2023, the city purchased over $52 million in items from the EDBE firms. Payments to these firms along with subcontracting participation is over 15% of the dollars spent by the city for goods and services. Today, I want to recognize and thank the following departments that exceeded their 2023 goals: Airport, City Manager's Office, Finance, Fire, Housing and Community Services, Human Resources, IT, Law, Planning, Police, Public Works and Utilities, and our Transit System. At this time, I will ask each of the individual departments to come forward to accept your award. Beginning with Finance. And then give each of them? Wichita Transit, Police. Transit. Wichita Education, Planning, Housing Services. Airport. Airport. Resources, Public Works. IT and Law. Thank you. Fire, City Manager's Office. We gotta be more friendly than this. Yes, second row. There we go. Thank you. Thank you. Would you like to say a few words?
Thank you Mayor, I just want to thank all of the departments that have worked so hard to meet their goals or exceed their goals. We've come a long way in the last 10 years in terms of our relationships with EBEs and DBEs in the organization or in the community. And we are going to continue to push forward in terms of making aggressive goals for the coming year. And I'm confident that even more departments will meet their goals next year. Thank you.
Thank you again for the participants through the proclamation process and the awards process. Time for the public agenda portion of our meeting, which allows up to five minutes per individual. Madam Clerk, please call the first individual.
Brayden Brown, Basic Wi-Fi Security.
Well hello everybody, my name is Brayden Brown. And I'm here to talk to you about basic Wi-Fi security. I'm going to be saying some pretty scary things and here, but before I do, I'm going to talk about the three things that are going to help mitigate those scary things I'm about to talk about. One, first thing almost everyone in this room should do is update and improve their home Wi-Fi passwords. The admin password on your device as well as your access password for what you use to connect devices, to connect to it. 12 characters would be ideal. 10 characters can be solved now within seconds. 12 characters and numbers that are not words would be great. Again, do your own research, think about this on your own time, but that's number one, improve your passwords. Two, put a lot of, put your other Wi-Fi devices on a guest network. Now, Wi-Fi has gotten cheap, we can create, we have all sorts of devices that have Wi-Fi in them now. Children's toys, doorbells, random things that tell you what temperature it is outside. Everything has Wi-Fi now, but not everything has really good Wi-Fi security. In fact, some of the chipsets in those things are massively outdated and use older protocol which just streams your Wi-Fi password out into the air for anybody to get. Three, update your Wi-Fi hardware. The latest hardware has a Wi-Fi encryption protocol three. Anything that's using less than that is sadly so outdated it can be cracked in seconds by a car driving past your house. Past, not even stopping. That's, here's where the scary stuff starts coming in. So first things, just reiterate, one, change passwords. Two, put insecure Wi-Fi connected things on a guest network with a different password. Three, upgrade your home Wi-Fi to the latest stuff. It's an arms race between hackers and security protocol. It's, there's, newer is going to be better on that one just in terms of security for your house. Okay, so let's talk the scary things. Like I mentioned before, it is ridiculously easy to crack older Wi-Fi protocol. WP1 and 2 are, can be solved in seconds. And even if you have a very, very strong password in those, there are certain attacks where somebody can drive past your house, find out what kind of router you have, and the handshake or some of the code, go back to wherever they were, take as long as they want to solve it, then come back and plant a device on your property that piggybacks on that either taking out things that are available on your home network or potentially implicating you for whatever illegal things they might be at using your homework, app, network to access. So yeah, some very, very scary things there. There's more, but in general, I just want to reiterate the top three things. One, use a strong password. Two, put your non-secure devices on a separate Wi-Fi. That way, even if they are compromised, they're not allowing as much access to your home devices, your home computers, your home networked in data, the things that you really care about, your photos, your, the things that are super important to you. And then last, upgrade your home hardware. And now I'll take any questions if there's any with remaining time and also nice to see you again, we used to work together at a TV station years ago. That said.
Vice Mayor Ballard.
Thank you Mayor. I would just like to say thank you for coming and sharing that. I think those are some things that we just don't think about sometimes and like you said, are very easy things that we could do to prevent any type of security breaching. So appreciate you taking the opportunity to come visit.
No problem, and just especially anybody who takes home work stuff, you know, keeping your home network secure, very important. Thank you.
Thank you Brayden for the opportunity to share some helpful tips for all of us. Again, public agenda time is for individuals in our community to share information or ideas. And you can always sign up on our website at wichita.gov. Madam Clerk, please call the next individual.
Liesel Wright, Call for Ceasefire Resolution in Gaza.
Good morning, my name is Liesel Wright. I am here to ask you for a vote for a ceasefire resolution in Gaza. Over 100 cities in the United States now have ceasefire resolutions in place. By far, most of the proposed resolutions have passed. Universities, cities, and countries all over the world are calling for ceasefire in Gaza. Wichita State University Student Government passed a ceasefire resolution in March of this year. The UN Security Council has passed a binding ceasefire resolution, which Israel is defying as it continues massacring Palestinians in Gaza. More than 250 human rights organizations have called for ceasefire. Resolutions like these help to bring an end to apartheid in South Africa. When I was in high school, I had the privilege of joining students at Columbia University and calling for an end to apartheid through my church youth group. Helping to end apartheid in South Africa was a grassroots effort in the United States. It started with small voices. Mary Frances Berry, historian and professor at the University of Pennsylvania, recently likened the ceasefire movement to the initiative to end apartheid, which pushed cities and universities to pass resolutions. She said, "If you want the federal government to do something, then it makes sense to use any kind of activity you can to show that there is opinion from the public in favor for your cause." According to US Mission Geneva, by 1988, more than 155 academic institutions had fully or partially divested from South Africa. In addition, by 1989, 26 US states, 22 counties, and more than 90 cities had taken economic action against companies doing business in South Africa. Beth Miller of Jewish Voice for Peace stated that polls show that 60% of American voters and 80% of Democratic voters are in favor of a ceasefire. Ceasefire resolutions at the municipal level are one way to amplify voices of the majority of Americans who support permanent ceasefire. These initiatives send a message to our members of Congress and the Biden administration around what their voters want. Opting for a ceasefire resolution does not mean you're taking sides. It means you want peace for Israelis and Palestinians alike. This situation is dangerous for Israelis as well as Palestinians. A ceasefire would protect countless innocent lives. As of June 30th, Al Jazeera reports conservatively that 37,877 people in Gaza have died, including 15,000 children. Nearly 87,000 people are injured and over 10,000 are missing. At least 533 people in the occupied West Bank have been slaughtered, including 137 children. There is no Hamas in the West Bank. Israel is also in grave danger. 1,139 Israelis have been killed. A growing number of countries are turning away from Israel. Scott Ritter, former intelligence officer, has stated that Israel is losing the war, which is separate from the genocide. Over 100 Israeli hostages have not returned home. Hamas has grown in numbers since October 7th and is winning the war according to Robert A. Page of Foreign Affairs. The wider implications of this situation endangers all of us with worldwide conflict. Most of humanity wants a ceasefire and blames our country for the continuation of genocide. The United States gives Israel 3.8 billion each year in violation of the Leahy Law. That's nearly $6 million taken collectively from the pockets of Wichitaans every year. Since October 7th, that price tag has grown exponentially. Imagine what we could do with the money here. Israel is a wealthy country. I cannot trust a civil servant who professes fiscal responsibility while funding violence in foreign lands. A growing number of Americans are refusing to vote for representatives who neglect to call for ceasefire. Public servants rely on the support of constituents to enjoy another term. This is history in the making, this will be your legacy. You won't be remembered for standard ordinances or how many stoplights you installed, you will be remembered for listening to your constituents. You will be remembered for your impact on taxpayer dollars. You will be remembered for whether or not you stood for peace at this time. Do you have any questions for me? Okay, thank you so much, have a good day.
Thank you to our guest speakers. Madam Clerk, please call the next item.
Consent Agenda Items 1 through 9.
Larnie, Councilmember Tuttle.
Thank you, I'm not going to pull the item, I just wanted to make sure that we highlight something on item number seven. It is in our Transit Department, it's our Veterans Ride Free Program. I just want to give a big shout out to the Veterans Administration and then also to the United Way of the Plains for this partnership. I heard about the funding ending at the Greater Wichita Area Veterans Advocacy Board. And so met with staff, Penny was very attentive, did a fantastic job. We reached out to Senators Marshall, Senator Moran, and then also Congressman Estes, whose staff was very helpful and tried to help us find some funding and may continue to find funding in the future. But for now, the VA and the United Way of the Plains certainly need to be thanked for this partnership. I've heard from many veterans groups and from veterans that if they didn't have the opportunity to utilize our transit for free, it could actually tip them into homelessness because they would have to pay for their own transportation, they may not be able to get to their jobs. And so this program truly is impacting and quite possibly saving people's lives. So thank you to Transit and thanks for all involved.
Any other items to be pulled or discussed? I see none. Is there a motion to approve consent agenda items?
So moved.
Second. Motion and a second, any further discussion? I see none, Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Motion passes seven zero. Madam Clerk, please call the next item.
Board of Bids and Contracts dated July 1st, 2024.
Morning Mayor, City Council, Josh Lauber, Department of Finance. The Board of Bids and Contracts convened for July 1st, 2024 with the following items for your review. For engineering, we have the Spring Valley Paving Bell Chase 3rd Edition for Pearson Construction LLC in the amount of $551,432.25. We have the 2024 Outsource Paving Preservation Program Joint and Crack Seal Phase 4 Recommendation for Circle C Paving and Construction LLC in the amount of $125,000 awarded within the engineer's estimate in compliance with City Code 2.64. We have the Wichita Multimodal Facility, we are rejecting all bids at this time with anticipation to go back out. For purchasing, we have the Cisco Smart Net Hardware Maintenance and Support Renewal for Logicalis Incorporated in the amount of $117,161.97. This is how to become a vendor with the city. These are open request proposals out on the street today. And I'd be happy to try to answer any questions, I recommend your approval.
Thank you Josh, first question comes from Vice Mayor Ballard.
Thank you Mayor. Hi Josh, did we only receive one bid for the multimodal?
Correct.
Okay, is that why it was rejected, because we only got one?
No, it was rejected due to the bids exceeding the engineer's estimate. We didn't place the engineer's estimate today because we are wanting to go back out, we want to show our cards in effect. But there were some concerns about the specs, specifically concrete, and I believe some wiring with federal regulation, excuse me, for domestic products. So we're evaluating those with our engineering staff and we're putting it back out.
Okay, thank you so much.
Councilmember Glasscock.
Just a quick follow-up to Vice Mayor Ballard's question, what is the timeline that we're expecting for going back out to bid for this? Does that adjust our construction that was projected during this year?
Paul? Should be a couple of weeks, but I'll let Paul speak to that.
Good morning, Paul Gunsmann, Public Works and Utilities. We have met with some general contractors last week to discuss some of their concerns that they had with the specifications regarding concrete, as Josh had said, as well as some cable barrier for the parking structure itself and elevator being Buy America, Build America. So we have had those discussions, we will regroup again tomorrow to discuss the outcomes of that meeting. And we received some good input back from the general contractors as well as ready mix suppliers. So I would like to get this back out and open bids here within four to six weeks. I'd like to try and target late July, early August. And then I also need to be, as of right now, the original bid had substantial completion of the facility completed by, I think Thanksgiving of 2025 with final completion of December 31st, 2025. So I will need to get with FTA to see if we can extend that to four to six weeks that we would take to rebid this project, so.
Any further questions? I see none. I move that we approve the Board of Bids and Contracts. Second. Motion and a second, any further discussion? See none, Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Motion passes seven zero. Before we move on, I will use my point of privilege to just recognize Central County Commission Chairman Ryan Beatty, who's in the room right now. Madam Clerk, please call the next item. Madam Clerk, please call the next item.
Petitions for public improvements.
Good morning, Mayor. City Council members, Paul Gunsmann, Public Works and Utilities, for the record. This morning, I have a few petitions for public improvements for your consideration. The signatures on the petitions represent 100% of the improvement district, and the petitions are valid per Kansas statute. Bridgeport Industrial Park 1, located District 6, the project will provide paving improvements required for new commercial development. Arvada Edition on September 20th, 2022, the City Council approved sewer improvements to serve our Veda Edition. The developer has submitted revised petition with revised budget to meet current market conditions. Meese 2nd Edition. On August 22nd, 2023, the City Council approved water, sewer, and paving petitions for Meese 2nd Edition. The developer has submitted revised petitions to combine Phases 2 and 3 for the stormwater sewer petitions into one petition and combine Phases 2 and 3 for sanitary sewer petitions into one petition. The revised petitions for water and paving, for water Phase 3 as well as paving, have revised budgets to reflect the current market conditions and to cover the cost of a private bid. The Phase 2 water budget remains as previously approved. Falcon Falls East 2nd and Falcon Falls East 3rd Edition on October 10th, 2023 and April 16th, 2024, the City Council approved petitions for water, stormwater, sanitary sewer, and paving improvements to serve Falcon Falls East 2nd Edition. The developer has submitted revised petitions to include Falcon Falls East 3rd Edition, which is a replat of a portion of Falcon Falls 2nd Edition. The budgets remain as previously approved and cover the cost of a private bid. It is recommended the City Council approve the new and revised petitions and budget without the new and amending resolutions and authorize necessary signatures, and I will stand for questions.
Any questions for Stan? I see none. Motion to approve the petition for public improvement.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? See none. Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Motion passes 7-0. Madam Clerk, please call the next item.
Approval of an option agreement with Unified School District Number 259 for property located at 1025 North Main Street.
Honorable Mayor, Members of Council, Troy Anderson, Assistant City Manager. As you may recall, this item came before you previously, back on June 11th, I believe it was. And you all took action to postpone that until today, giving USD 259 and the Board of Education an opportunity to weigh in and act on, one, the disposition of the property, and two, whether or not to enter into the option agreement. Last Thursday, 259 Board of Education took that item up, and they did recommend in favor of disposing of the property and entering into the option agreement. So with that being said, just to reiterate what's in the agenda report, USD 259 is the current owner of the property located at 1025 North Main Street, also referred to as Park Elementary School. The site contains about 4.5 acres and includes a two-story building with just under 50,000 square feet. Here's the property shown on the map in front of you. So the option agreement contains sort of four parts. One is just the term of the option agreement, 180 days to allow us to do the due diligence that we need in order to make a determination and a recommendation back to you on whether or not we should acquire the property. Number two, it establishes the purchase price. Number three, it spells out sort of how we go about notifying USD 259 or the owner of the property should we decide to exercise our option to acquire the property. And then the last part just spells out the terms and conditions by which we can access the property and perform testing and survey work and sampling and those kind of things. The contingency part of the option agreement really is just that, under state law, school district property for the disposition of school district property, the state has first right of refusal. I won't read this into the record again. We did that back on June 11th. But this lays out the process by which the state can either exercise or waive their first right of refusal to acquire the property. Financial considerations of this. Should the city decide to exercise its option, purchase price will be paid for out of the Economic Development Fund. Lot departments reviewed and approved the option agreement as deformed, and it's recommended the City Council approve the agreement and authorize the necessary signatures. With that being said, I'll stand for questions.
Thank you, Troy. We'll begin with Councilmember Glasscock.
Hey, Troy. I just have one quick question regarding the purchase price.
Yep.
Why is it a dollar? For all extensive purposes, it's a donation. Why is the requirement a dollar? And then can you reiterate that taxpayers have already paid for this? This is just moving from one governmental entity to another? And the logic behind that as well?
Yeah. So following the move by the school district to shutter the school as we started exploring whether or not this was a viable option for our multi-agency center, and we began reaching out to the school district and negotiating. Obviously, purchase price came up in those conversations. During those conversations, the sell price of a dollar came up, right? In the context of, as you indicated, right? The building was originally paid for using taxpayer dollars, right? And so using taxpayer dollars again to acquire the building would, in essence, place the burden of purchasing the property twice on taxpayer dollars. And so it's a pretty standard practice, right, to convey land for less than market value, particularly when you have two organizations, such as a public school district and a municipality. And so honestly, 259 did a great job during their discussions of why they recommended kind of coming to the table and recommending the sell price or the purchase price being a dollar. Again, being fiscally responsible with taxpayer dollars. But then also, in order to, in order to secure the transaction, right? It's not just a donation. In essence, a transaction for a dollar could be perceived as a donation, which is why early on in the process, folks had maybe kind of used that analogy, right? But in actual sort of legalese and illegal, as we convey property from one, from one party to another, grant or to grantee, we have to secure that transaction with some sort of monetary value. Oftentimes, you'll see either a dollar or $10 or whatever that is, just for sort of legalese purposes. But that's why there will be a purchase price of a dollar.
So the dollar is just required for the dollar?
Correct.
Councilmember Johnston.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Troy. I would just like to first thank the Homelessness Task Force and the city for all the work they've done on this, including City Manager Layton. Tremendous amount of work. If we go back, there were two sites. There were seven sites identified originally. Got down to two sites, the most expensive being built from the ground up on the Humankind Campus. The other one was Riverside Hospital, which we were going to buy for a little over $6 million and then renovate it. And that was kind of the leading candidate for this site. The providers were not, the homeless providers were not in favor of this at all because it's too far away from their facilities. So really, one day I came into the city offices and Councilman Glasscock said, hey, the school district just voted to close Park Elementary. Maybe it could be a good place for the multi-agency center. Apparently, city staff thought same thing because of the quick process of analyzing that site. And providers like it very much. It's close to them. It's close to where they already are. And I want to commend Vice Mayor Ballard for doing a wonderful job with the community in that neighborhood, reaching out to them and hearing from them, did a wonderful job. And to you, Troy, for doing a great job, the two open houses. I think it's quite a process, and I think this is a great solution. It's not Taj Mahal solution. It's a temporary housing for people. We don't want them living there forever. Want them living there till we can find them either non-congregate housing and then eventually housing. So I think it's a wonderful solution and hope it proceeds forward and we get to the finish line. So thank you.
Councilmember Hoheisel.
Thank you, Mayor. Troy? What are we going to be able to do in terms of getting in there and doing due diligence until this, until we're able to really get in there and start doing the hard work?
Yeah. So, excuse me. Should City Council approve entering into the option agreement today? Our team is immediately prepared to begin due diligence, accessing the property, begin trying to better understand and analyzing what improvements could be made, should be made, what the costs are going to be associated with that, what the availability of labor and supplies, all that's going to. So over the next 30, 60 days, in really short order, right? We want to get into the property and better understand what the implications of this are with the ultimate goal of, we know we want to stand up an emergency winter shelter for this upcoming winter season as quickly as possible, hopefully by mid-November. With that being said, we also have to be very conscious of going through an environmental review, right? So HUD requires that we not take any choice-limiting actions until we gain approval from HUD. We're anticipating, hopefully, to get that approval sort of mid to late September. And so one of the things that we want to try to understand are, what are the things that we can do now in order that, should that approval come back, then we then can close on the property, acquire the property, potentially have folks lined up to do the work? So that our ultimate goal is, like I said, to try to stand up at a minimum, an emergency winter shelter by mid to late November.
Is there any way to expedite the process? I'm sure you guys have looked into it.
Unfortunately, the environmental work and the HUD approval really is kind of a timeline and a process in and of itself. Again, we can't make any choice-limiting actions. We truly do have to wait until HUD gives us that authority to use grant funds in order to really make a decision on closing on the property, entering into contracts for renovations and those kind of things. And so the timeline gets shorter and shorter day by day. But to your point, over the next 30, 60 days, right? We can do a lot in the way of due diligence and preparing for submitting for building permit applications and those kind of things. But over the next 30, 60 days, we'll know a lot more about what exactly the costs are going to be and what the timeline is going to look like.
Do we have any idea how long it'll take to install the sprinkler system once we get the go-ahead?
It's all going to be dependent on contractor availability and supply chain. But it, once you line that up, it should go very quickly. Our contractor, our development partner, Petro, along with HFG Architecture and Macallan Gordon Construction are an incredible development partner. They're doing some incredible work, and they've given us indication that we should be able to achieve that sort of mid to late November schedule for opening up an emergency winter shelter.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor Ballard.
Thank you, Troy. Could you explain, I know you dabbled in it a little bit, but I've been seeing a lot of criticisms about the school being worth $750,000 and why, I know Councilmember Glasscock said we're just transferring from one to the other, but can you just explain why we're not paying $750,000?
So in addition to, in addition to the fact of you're just going from one public agency to another, we want to be fiscally responsible with taxpayer dollars. We also want to be mindful of, right? There's the market associated with former schools and buildings of the, you know, this is not a traditional office building. This is not a traditional residential building, right? And so there's probably a very limited market as it relates to buildings such as these. The adaptive reuse of buildings like these become very, very difficult. And so while we're certainly open to having the conversation, we want to be good stewards of taxpayer dollars. Any dollars that we put into acquiring the property are just going to be dollars that we're not going to be able to put into renovation or operations and maintenance, right? And so we're trying to just be good stewards of taxpayer dollars.
And with the school, if it did not go forward as the MAC, basically what I'm talking about is the school is having a shortfall as well with millions of dollars. And I just wanted to make sure that we were explaining why we were not paying market value because we'd be transferring the property. But also, if the MAC did not move forward, the school would have to maintain this building, keep it up, which all costs money as well.
Yeah, absolutely. You know, today's action, again, does not guarantee that we either are able to or want to acquire the building, right? This just gives us that opportunity to do the due diligence. To your point, right? If the city's not going to acquire the building, there's going to be a period of time in which the school district has made the decision to shutter, to close this building. So if the city's not coming in to acquire it, somebody else might be interested in it. But right, there's a lead time on that. And again, adaptive reuse of these types of buildings becomes very difficult to the point of it's not sprinkled, right? And so even just deferred maintenance and even change of occupancy classes as we identify that through the building code, right? There are significant upgrades that may have to occur. And so the private sector really challenges with a lot of adaptive reuse of buildings such as these. And so there's going to be a lead time associated with that. And in the meantime, to your point, right? The school district would be responsible for maintaining it, securing it, right? And oftentimes, a lot of these vacant abandoned buildings are victims of property crimes, loitering, squatting, right? And so obviously, those are all things that the school district would have to be mindful of. So as the city approached the school district, they were very interested in kind of the city taking over ownership because they wouldn't be responsible for them.
Thank you.
Councilmember Johnston.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Troy. Just following up on Councilmember Hoheisel's questions. I am concerned a little bit about the timeline. And HUD definitely has their own timeline. Do you think it would be beneficial if the council took up a resolution to encourage both the Legislative Council and HUD to make decisions a little quicker? I mean, given that we have an actual solution. You know, last year, we were working through solutions that continued to fall through. And then last minute, we had to make it to choice. But right now, this looks like a really great option and just encouraging them to speed up the process.
Mayor, if I could. I think a resolution of that nature would be premature. We have, we're following the steps that are necessary. It's in our court right now. HUD doesn't have any documents from us other than they may have the Phase 1, which led us to the Phase 2 review. We, I think we could be just as effective by contacting our legislative offices, our congressmen, as well as our senators if we get to a point where it looks like the review process will drag out. But I think it would be premature to send something out and ask for expedited review when they haven't even received the documents from us yet.
Okay.
Councilmember Tuttle.
Thank you, and thank you, Troy. I have further accolades during the comments section. But since we're still in questions, thank you for coming to my breakfast on Saturday. I appreciate it. And this is one of the topics that we discussed. And the question that was asked at the breakfast was regarding the recent Supreme Court ruling and the timeliness of this. And I thought you had a really fantastic answer about why that specific ruling also makes this much more imperative regarding the timeline. Could you just maybe share some of the comments that you shared on Saturday that we all appreciated? Thank you.
Yeah. So I'm not an attorney, but we do have attorneys in the room that can probably lean in on this a little bit. But yes, the Supreme Court last week, I believe it was Thursday. was Thursday, ruled on, gave opinion on, there was a Ninth Circuit decision around the inability of cities to enforce encampment camping ordinances without associated sort of infrastructure, right, bed space. And so the Supreme Court ruled, opined on the fact that yes, cities can enforce their, their no camping sort of encampment ordinances, right? But with that being said, to your point, my response to the question on Saturday was, you know, we are, we are hearing this just as quickly as the general public across the nation is, is hearing this, right? And so it's a balanced approach, right? We want to be certainly sensitive to, to not criminalizing those folks who are experiencing homelessness, right? Which is why, again, the multi-agency center and the infrastructure is so critical. So our hope is to try and get folks who are experiencing homelessness, sort of mental health, substance abuse, the help that they need, right, which is kind of first and foremost our ultimate goal and objective. There's a lot of really good research and data around wraparound services and getting folks into housing and the transition back to a sort of fruitful and productive lifestyle, right? As opposed to continuing to try and sort of issue citations against folks. Now, we do have that leverage, right? And that's what the Supreme Court handed down to cities is we do have that leverage. And so it's a balanced approach. We certainly want, this is a humanitarian effort. We've been saying that sort of since day one, right, that these are, these are individuals and our ultimate goal is to try and get them the help and the assistance they need to overcome the life circumstances that they may be experiencing at this time. And so we'll continue to evaluate as a city what that Supreme Court ruling looks like and what it means for our day-to-day operations and ultimately the operations of a multi-agency center in the future.
No further questions, but I do have one for staff. It's a direction for staff regarding the SCOTUS ruling. I would like to see actual procedures so that it is clear what the Wichita Police Department can and cannot do based off of the SCOTUS ruling. And we'd like a presentation regarding the balance between, once we have our MAC and what we can do in the meantime. If we can have further clear clarity regarding also the cleanup of campsites with, which is seventy-two hours and the reasoning behind why it's taken longer than the seventy-two hours so far because of our contractor. If we can have a full directing staff, if we can have a full report, that would be beneficial for us moving forward.
Mayor, well, we'll be happy to present something.
Could I add one, just addition to that, too, a report on our contract cleanup and in terms of the capital investment we've made, how many cleanups have been cleaned up? I know we probably have that readily available. If that can just be sent out, that would be helpful information.
Thank you.
Thank you. It is now time for a public comment regarding this specific item. If you would like to comment, please state your name and your address and you will have up to five minutes to speak. You can come to the podium.
All right. Thank you everyone. My name is Jason Carver. I'm at 12740 East Meadow Court, formerly 1004 North Market near Park Elementary. Wanted to address a couple things I heard and then I've got a little bit of a spiel to go through. But when I vote, I vote for a school board. I vote for city councils, independent agencies. So transferring something between those agencies for a dollar is essentially taking money out of the hands of schoolchildren and putting it in the hands of contractors. There's no other way to say it. You've taken that choice of, as a voter, away from me and handed it to someone else when you transfer a property for a dollar. So let me talk a little bit about the techniques that I've observed here. So first of all, I'm economically blessed. I stand to benefit from this decision. I'm a commercial property owner as well. I stand to benefit. My eastside home has increased in value more than the home I sold on North Market Street. And that's over just a couple of years. So I've learned a lot living in the middle of this. I lived across from Humankind. I lived next to Breakthrough. I lived next to where 316 was built. So I was perplexed when I heard that you're putting a congregate shelter in the middle of a residential neighborhood. I know firsthand the impact that has to the neighbors. At first, I suspected the Dunning Kruger effect, which means you know a little bit about the problem and you think you're doing the right thing, but not enough about the problem to know you're doing the wrong thing. So I assumed the best out of everyone. I understand people have good intentions, but the facts led me in another direction. Fact one, the people consulted were people that were going to benefit from this, not the people who are going to be harmed. Fact two, the outcome of concentrating a lot of mentally ill and substance abusers in one area has such a predictably negative impact on that neighborhood that it was, the deal was done before the neighbors were notified. I know this for a fact. I was the president of Historic Midtown Citizens Association for nearly a decade. I'm friends with them still today. It went through so quickly that public agenda speakers had, have to give you more advanced notice than you gave the neighborhood. That's how quickly it went down. We've got a commissioner that says we're better as a community. We're not going to let people freeze on the streets. Worst year we had, people froze on the streets. Why? Sixty-four thousand square foot downtown library was vacant. Was great for a COVID shot, but not, not for the, not for the homeless that were freezing. Fact four, this exact same thing has been done in Los Angeles, San Francisco, Portland, Seattle, New York City. Homelessness is up there, along with the violence, along with the crime, and along with the taxes. And it hit me, we're solving for something different here. This is about winners and losers. This is about moving money and moving grifters. This is about relocating the homeless away from investment, not solving it. There are alternatives. You know it. This all makes sense now. So thank you on behalf of my fortune. I'll benefit from this. Thanks on behalf of Riverside, Millair, Downtown, Delano, Old Town, folks on the east and west side whose property values are going to soar, lobbyists, businesses, the social organizations, the enriched contractors, trash collectors and the pharmaceutical distributors that'll benefit from the concentration of their customers. Everybody knows that we're just relocating the homeless and we're relocating them away from the rich and powerful. So we owe it to you. And so while you clink your champagne glasses to celebrate this decision, just know that there are going to be people who owe more to the bank than their homes are worth near this. And they're going to be crushed. So I voted to restore trust in City Hall. This is not that. So in closing, my family and I moved from Historic Midtown when I predicted our leaders would put these special interests above those of the citizens who aspire to make Historic Midtown wonderful. Here in a few minutes, I predict you're going to prove me right. And I predict years from now, when homelessness is up, crime is up, and the tax burden is up, that your names will be remembered for that. Thank you.
Councilmember Glasscock.
I just do have a quick question for staff. Prior to the emergency shelter being located on Twenty First Street, what intersection was it located at? Humankind Emergency Shelter?
Can you, can you?
Prior to the emergency shelter being located at Twenty First Street, where was the Humankind Emergency Shelter? Wasn't it at Eighth and Market Street?
Yes, that's correct. There was a shelter at Eighth and Market on the Humankind campus before we stood up the emergency winter shelter last year at Twenty First and Grove.
Okay, thank you.
You know, for how long that emergency shelter had been at Eighth and Market prior to the Twenty First and Opportunity Drive location for just one season?
Man, that's a, I do not have that information. We can certainly get that information for you though.
Thank you.
Yep.
We can continue public comments?
Thank you Council. My name is Michaela Welch. I live at thirteen forty-six North Emporia and I am president, current president of Historic Midtown Citizens Association. I appreciate the opportunity to speak on behalf of my neighbors. There is a lot of passion around this situation. And when I received the call, I went through an entire emotion worth of passion around this situation. There's not a right answer because, as you all know, homelessness isn't the right answer. There's not going to be an easy way for us to solve this. And I feel passionately, we have no choice but to try. So I thank you all for not stopping when we've met against resistance and challenges that we've faced. I appreciate that we were not a council or a city to turn a blind eye and we didn't stop fighting for our homeless neighbors. And our Midtown Citizens Association refer to them as neighbors because regardless of how you live in Wichita, you're my neighbor. So we don't always like what happens in our neighborhood, but we always appreciate the human beings that they are. So I'm asking all of you to take a moment and think about last March, when the neighbors around Park Elementary woke up and realized the school that they had bought their house near, that they had purchased so that their children could be next to a school for the rest of their elementary time, that is no longer going to be in existence. They are now going to have to bus to a new school. That was in March. And a couple of weeks ago, we informed them that it will also be the largest homeless shelter in the city of Wichita. That is a drastic change. We're not talking about wrong or right. We're not talking about should we or shouldn't we. We're talking about the truth of the situation that those neighbors woke up to, that they are now living next to a homeless shelter. So my purpose for you today is not to say, don't do this because we have no choice but to do the right thing. But that also means, do not forget our neighbors who now live next to the homeless shelter that you're voting to put there, that will have to understand when somebody who inevitably isn't allowed inside because of whatever reason is going to walk through their neighborhood. They aren't walking through that neighborhood today. We must accept responsibility as citizens of Wichita to take care of the neighbors whose lives have now drastically changed because we're doing the right thing for our neighbors in the neighborhood who don't have a home. So let's do what we need to do for them. And that's why we have to take care of Historic Midtown. Thank you.
I see no further public comment. We'll bring it back to the bench. Councilmember Hoheisel.
Thank you Mayor. I appreciate some of the thoughtful conversation around this. We're not wanting to make a homeless shelter. We're not trying to move a problem from one place to another. We're trying to cure a problem. So this shelter isn't going to be a place for them to just sit. This shelter is going to be a place for them to get help and hopefully get back on their feet. And we do have examples of this, such as San Antonio, where this does work. So again, I appreciate all the conversation. I understand when people don't want this in their backyard because my district is, as far as I'm concerned, along with maybe District Six, ground zero for the issues that we have right now. And it's different in different parts of the city with different problems with the, the people who are currently there. So this is a cure. This is a step forward to actually reducing the number of people we have on the streets right now as opposed to playing lack of mole and moving them from one shelter to another. So I am in support of this, at least this option. And we will continue to work to make sure that Midtown is safe. We will go the extra mile to do what we have to do to ensure the safety of the residents around there. So that's really all I have to say right now. Thank you Mayor.
Councilmember Tuttle.
Thank you. I just want to take an opportunity to thank staff. I know Troy and Sally are Director of Housing and Community Services. This has truly been a labor of love for you as well as City Manager Leighton. So thank you for your extraordinary efforts for this. I also want to thank the community for the speakers who came today, for the community members who came to the two open houses, for the community members who have communicated with us as a council. This is your city and this is your City Hall. And we want to hear your input. That's how we make better decisions, by having people's voices heard. I really want to thank Vice Mayor Ballard and also Chairman of the Sedgwick County Commission, Beatty. I know that you knocked on doors, you held listening sessions, you answered calls, and you've just done an amazing job being true civic leaders in this situation. Also, I want to thank USD two-five-nine. This is a partnership that will benefit them as well as could benefit the city. You know, now they don't have to have a building that they have to maintain when they're already having budget constraints. So this is just an opportunity for a partnership. And then finally, I want to thank our homeless outreach team, but then also our current providers who are already serving the most vulnerable in our community. I see representatives from Humankind and Open Door and the United Way of the Plains and probably missing some others. But you've been fantastic on the homeless task force, but then also providing technical assistance and your input and your thoughts, but doing the really hard work now. And I'm grateful that we'll continue to have a partnership so that we can get your content expertise and guidance in the future. This is just the first step. This isn't the solution. This is one step towards that. So thank you for your continued partnership and your hard work. And I will be supportive of this today. Thank you.
Councilmember Glasscock.
Just following up from my question a moment ago. So the current location for Park Elementary is around Ninth and Main Street. For thirty years, Humankind operated an emergency shelter at Eighth and Market, just less than about a block and a half away from this location. Within this location, there are more than thirty service providers within one mile currently, and they have been operating in this facility. These are the neighbors of the community as well. And I appreciate the neighbors coming and speaking very passionately and understanding and bringing compassion to the issue and also challenging us to make sure that we're very thoughtful in our decisions up here. So thank you for that. I also really enjoyed the opportunity to go and talk to neighbors with Councilman, or Vice Mayor Ballard, Mayor Wu, and Commissioner Beatty. When I was talking to neighbors, we knocked on more than a hundred homes and I didn't hear opposition at that time. I know that there are neighbors in opposition and I recognize that as well. But I had the opportunity to talk to a lot of neighbors one-on-one and it was good conversation where they all recognized that we have a challenge that we need to face. This project is very time sensitive as well, especially with the Supreme Court's decision. It's not humane for individuals to live on the street and it's not acceptable for our community for people to live on the street. And I think this is one step forward to be able to solve that. I also want to lastly say this is good governance working. This is two levels of government that are coming, three levels of government that are coming together. We hope the state will be good partners as well. So four levels, including the federal government, actually every level of government. And we want to make sure that we're solving this issue together because the city can't unilaterally do this. We need all of our partners to do this. And I think this shows buy-in from every level of government that we're moving in the same direction, that we're moving together to be able to solve this issue. So I'm going to be very supportive of this and look forward to hopefully after the due diligence period, opening up our emergency shelter and eventually the multi-agency center at formerly Park Elementary. So thank you so much.
Councilmember Johnson.
Thank you Mayor. First, I want to say thank you to the two speakers that we had, especially the second one. These are tough choices that we have to make as elected officials and someone's impacted every time. And I appreciate the urging of us to make sure we are working with the neighborhood as well. And that's why I appreciate Vice Mayor Ballard's leadership on that. But to the first speaker's points, we always hear about the problems around the country and we seem to negate that we are Wichita. And we can find a way as Wichitaans to make this work. And we talk about all these examples that may have challenges or maybe didn't work, but we have some incredible people here in the community, not only in the neighborhood, but the organizations, elected officials, different levels of government, all coming together to try to make this the best solution for those who need help. And even last year, as we talked about the emergency shelter and the impact that it would make, and it was in my district, we continue to look at folks who are unhoused as addicts and mental health issues. And that's not everyone. It's a concentration of people who need help, just a step in the right direction. Yes, there are some folks who have mental health challenges. Yes, there are some people who have substance abuse challenges, but there's also people who are housed that have that as well. Some may live in that neighborhood. I really believe this is a couple of steps in the right direction to make sure, again, that people can find the help they need and bringing all the resources into one location. Again, these are tough choices. Everyone's impacted no matter where this would go, whether it was in Mid- Everyone's impacted no matter where this would go, whether it was in Midtown, whether it was in South Wichita, North Wichita, East or West Wichita, some neighborhood is going to be impacted and it's our job to make sure that we work with the community to lessen that impact as much as possible. But I just hope that as we continue to go down this path in helping humans, that we stop the labeling of folks that they're all addicts or have substance abuse issues and mental health challenges. We all have things that we need to work on and a lot of these folks just fell on hard times and are looking for some support to get back on their feet. And this is a space that can do that, especially looking at all the partners that would be in the space. So I always want to offer that up when I hear that. Again, it's tough in every neighborhood. It was tough over at the Boys and Girls or Opportunity Drive. We did a lot of things. We learned a lot of lessons from that and I know those lessons will be implemented in this new space, but I'll be supportive. I know a lot of work went into this. And as we talk about last minute notification, I actually want to applaud the Vice Mayor and comms for trying to get out as soon as we saw we had a solution to talk to the neighborhood. While it may seem quick, it was quick for us to say, hey, this could work. It was a lesson we learned from 21st and Opportunity Drive. Let's go talk to the neighborhood now. And that's what happened. And it was not only one meeting, there was a second one scheduled and continued conversations going to happen with the neighborhood. So again, while it may have seemed quick, when the council knew that there was an opportunity, a meeting was called to talk to community. I am appreciative of that, that we didn't take our time and just sit back and think about it and then show up after everything was signed. We started on the front end. So I just wanted to put that out there. I'll be supportive today and appreciate everyone's hard work on this.
I will add my two comments regarding this decision. None of these decisions are easy, but it's because we have a long-term vision for our community. We truly want this to be the best city that people call home. And for years, our community has said homelessness is a challenge. But over the last six months since coming into a new body as a council, we made this a priority. Started with us going to Topeka advocating for what we now call a multi-agency center. It is a different, a smaller, but more manageable and realistic solution in a footprint that can truly help our community, not only with the investment that we'll make to make renovations, but ongoing because there will be operational costs that will be necessary to operate a MAC. I'm really grateful that this entire council came together in saying that, again, homelessness is a priority. And so we together have been looking for solutions, working with providers. Just last week, we were fortunate enough to see the groundbreaking or wall breaking of Union Rescue Missions expansion to help individuals facing homelessness. So we know that providers need to be at the table and we are grateful that you will continue to provide those services. This multi-agency center is supposed to be a one-stop location that will be not just a shelter, but an opportunity for individuals to truly launch, to launch into better opportunities for themselves, whether it's help with healthcare, whether it's help with job skills, whether it's help to become an individual here in Wichita. That's what the multi-agency center is trying to be. And again, our vision is to reach zero functional, zero homelessness here in Wichita. And it does require collaboration, which is why I'm grateful that Chairman Beatty decided to come here to our council to show his support because it does require not only every level of government, but also requires almost every single Wichitan to be at the table to help us with this problem in our community and challenge. And so again, I'm going to urge that our faith-based community also be at the table and continue to be at the table and help us gather all our resources to focus on the multi-agency center and not work independently, but rather collaboratively in helping individuals truly realize their full potential and help them move to other programs that will help them realize their full potential. So again, I will be very supportive of this vote and I know that this resides in Vice Mayor Ballard's district and I will ask her to speak.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Troy. I just wanted to say I'm thankful for the providers that are here today and continue to show up. We definitely cannot do any of this without you and your support. I'd also like to thank the neighbors of Midtown that are here today and that have continued to show up throughout this whole process, along with Chairman Beatty. I appreciate all of your help and leadership. My colleagues and to the staff. This is definitely a huge group effort and I know this is just the very first step of a really long process, but I just wanted to make sure that you all know that I'm appreciative. I was motivated to run for city council because I wanted to change the way the city approached helping those struggling with housing insecurity. Criminalizing homelessness doesn't work, but I knew if we wanted to get people housed, we had to get them the resources and services they need to get back on their feet. Each individual needs different things and my work over the years has taught me that there isn't a one-size-fits-all solution. But what helps people is holding their hand while they navigate these complicated systems. The MAC creates the opportunity for someone who decides they need help to come to one place and be given a warm handoff to the specific resources that they need. It will provide housing on-site. One of our biggest struggles with the housing supply is already, that's already tight in Wichita. While no project is perfect, I'm hopeful that this step forward will transform the way we approach homelessness now and into the future. I'm committed to actively engaging every day to ensure this MAC is successful and working for the neighborhoods that surround it. Now we all need to come together to make this successful so we can all achieve our common goal, which is to reach functional zero for homelessness in Wichita. And with that, I would like to take staff's recommend action and I move to approve the agreement and authorize the necessary signatures.
A second. With a motion and a second, are there any further comments? I see none. Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Motion passes seven zero. Madam Clerk, please call the next item.
Public hearing to consider an amendment to the Chicken and Pickle Community Improvement
Good morning, Mayor, members of City Council. Mark Calder with the City Mayor's Office Development Services. The item before you is a public hearing for the amendment of the Chicken and Pickle CID. Back in June, the City Council took the first action by receiving a petition from the developer to remove parcels from the district, which then set forth the setting of the public hearing that is being held today. This amendment does actually reduce the size and the existing boundaries of that CID, but it also does not increase the CID revenue in that district, so it will remain with the current limit of $2.3 million. The district as it is today is outlined here in this kind of purplish color. What's being requested to be removed is this area in red. That would leave the proposed CID boundaries here, which would include the Chicken and Pickle as well as the city infrastructure that'd be eligible for the city's portion of the CID. With that, I would stand for any questions. We also have representatives from the development group that can answer any questions as well.
Thank you, Mark. I have one question. Wanted to know when the CID cost cap is expected to be reached.
Based on current projections, I would say that it would probably go to about the term of the district. I don't anticipate it going, I don't expect it to go much earlier than that.
Do you have it here, Dave?
I'd have to look that up. I don't believe this one was set for the full 22 years. It was a shorter term than that, but I don't have that term in front of me. 15 years, so 2033 would roughly be when it would term out.
Thank you, Mark. I see no further questions for staff, so we'll open it up for public comment. Anyone in the audience who would like to speak on this item? Please state your name and address.
Myron Ackerman. I understand, I guess, that they're taking vacant land out of this community improvement district. Well, I would like to see, since the city has questionable results on these CID's, I would like to be published what, how this CID is performing. In essence, we did, you did, a CID for one business. I question whether that was a good idea because in essence, we're benefiting one, one business rather than a community investment district. I have reservations, as I say, based on previous performance in community districts. I'd like to know what this one is doing before we take any action regarding what we do. Presently, if someone were to develop the land that is being removed, we would increase the revenue. That's something I would want considered, is that we are in essence, we said, well, we're going to do this whole area and now we're saying, well, we're just going to do this one business. I have some issues with that, but the main thing, I would like information about how this thing is performing, a little more background as to what our intention is with this district. But more than anything, just questions about what are we doing with this district?
Councilmember Glasgow.
Quick follow-up for staff. Where could someone access how CID's are performing?
We have two resources for that. We have, on the City's Development Services Economic Development page, we have brief summaries of each one of the districts with the boundaries and the details of how each one is established. Also, on the economic development website, there are annual reports that show the current revenue and how that ties to the cost cap.
So it is public information?
Those are both published, yes.
Okay, thank you. And then quick follow-up to that, in terms of the ownership for the property, is it the same owner for both parcels of land, ones currently remaining and the ones leaving?
So, no, those are separate owners. The developer owns the parcels being removed and then there's an ownership entity that separately owns the Chicken and Pickle site.
Councilmember Hoheisel.
Thank you, Mayor. Mark, if we kept the property currently in the CID and it was developed, where would that additional revenue go?
Well, it would flow generally about how it's established now, so there would be the portion that goes back into the development and then the city's portion of that would go into a fund that's set aside for any improvements that might be needed into the public infrastructure, whatever that might be.
And that would be 10%?
Correct.
Okay. What are the public improvements that we have marked for the CID?
Right now, it's just in a reserve, set aside for either, you know, if there was ever a need to add, say like a traffic light for, like pedestrian crossing or traffic light. It's in a reserve right now that can be used if we have a need for additional improvements based on the development in that area and the traffic that creates.
So that would, there's essentially a cap on that as well? It's going to be 10% of the cap?
Yeah, it would be, yeah, basically it's 10% of whatever the revenue is generated, so it's tied to that cap, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Johnston.
Mark, thank you. To the Speaker, I would agree with you. I don't think, with all due respect to the previous council that approved it, I don't think this is a good use of a community improvement district. I think they should be at disadvantaged neighborhoods where we use that tool, not in an upscale east side development. So to your point, I agree with you. So thank you.
Councilmember Tuttle.
Thank you. Thank you, Mark, for your presentation. Whenever we have a presentation from our economic development team about incentives or programs, I always ask the same question. Is there any risk or cost to the city?
For this situation, it actually kind of tightens up what you see, so.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. We'll continue public comment. Are there any additional individuals who would like to speak on this specific item? I see none. We'll bring it back to the bench. Are there any further comments? If not, this resides in Councilmember Tuttle's district.
Thank you. Thank you to staff. Thank you, Mark, for your leadership on this initiative and for all staff involved. And with that, I would move that the City Council close the public hearing, place the ordinance on the first reading and authorize the necessary signatures.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? I see none. Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Motion passes seven zero. Madam Clerk, please call the next item.
2024 State and Local Cybersecurity Grant Program Submission.
Morning, Mayor. Councilmembers, Mike Mader for the IT Department. Before you this morning is a grant program that's actually funded through the federal government, but through the state. So it is only a submission. We have not been awarded any of these. As it goes through the federal government, it will take months, is what I've been told. So this is basically a cybersecurity in terms of any opportunities at the local level that we can use this grant funding to help us provide either equipment, in our case, that's what we're going to use it for, or other entities, software, those types of things. In our case, we're going to use it specifically for hardware. We did break it up in discussion with state entities. There's only $2.8 million. That sounds like a lot, but it has to go across the whole state of Kansas. So initially, we had a proposal that would have taken about a third of that just for the city of Wichita. So we broke that into three different submissions. Again, the equipment is for replacement, helps with overall security, broken down in the police fire for $337,000, water and critical infrastructure and other. So we tried to break those out into three different categories just to improve our opportunity of getting funded. So it is recommended that City Council approve the grant agreements and authorize the necessary signatures. Happy to stand for any questions that I highly doubt are coming my way.
Thank you, Mike. Beginning with Councilmember Hoheisel.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mike, for all the work that you've done here recently too, you and your team. You've been working diligently over the last couple of months. So this is a pretty timely item here on the agenda, right?
Yes.
If we are denied part or all of the grant, do we still plan on following through with these investments?
We will.
Okay, yeah, that was the only question I had. Thank you.
I have multiple questions. I'll start off with, so it looks like the application went out April 30th, right before our cyber incident. Is this a second time that we're applying or can you explain the April 30th date versus today's date?
That actually, that was when the submissions were due. So it just by chance, there was no, it was not a reaction to what we thought might occur or any of that. It's just, just by chance that we submitted that on that date. I would have come to you sooner, but as Councilman Hoheisel indicated, we've been a little busy for the last couple of months.
Which then brings me to the question that I know that our media partners want to know. Are there any status updates regarding May 5th cyber incident?
Not that I could, not that I could talk about it in public form. Not that I could, not that I could talk about it in public form.
And one last question, this is more for city manager. Does the city have a dedicated grant writer right now, or does each department have their own method of grant writing? And is there a value in having a dedicated grant writer for the city of Wichita?
Mayor, it's a good question. This is an issue council members have discussed with me time over the last few years on occasion. As we've talked about it, as staff, it probably does not make sense to have a single grant office because of the unique requirements of the different federal agencies you work with. I've talked to our lobbyist, Jim Davenport, and asked for his advice regarding that. But what he has recommended is that we look at the ability to embed that capacity in certain departments, especially those where we would more likely apply on a regular basis for grants. His firm keeps us apprised of grant opportunities, but they don't write the grant applications. And so, I believe, if it wasn't one of my goals for the year, it was strongly suggested that I bring back a proposal for embedding grant application opportunities or capabilities inside the organization, and I will be bringing something back on that.
If you can, this is a staff-directed question, if we can have a better understanding of which departments usually ask for federal grants, this is more for the public to understand, including this grant right here, many of the federal grants have a local matching grant, which means the city of Wichita has to come up with those dollars to match with the federal government requirement might be, and in this case, it's a 10% match, which is very typical. If we could get a list of the departments that tend to ask for federal grants, and how often, to see if there is a value in having either an embedded individual or really a grants department?
We, we can do that. The council requirement is that all grant applications come to you before they are submitted to the federal agency unless there's a timeline issue, and that's because there are matching requirements, and the count, we, this, from a staff standpoint, we don't want to commit to grant match without council authority. So, those are all channeled through you, and more than happy to, to run through the departments, but it's going to be predictable, pretty much, Public Works, Utilities, Police, Fire are some of the ones we probably see on the most frequent basis.
I'll be more specific. May I please have an Excel spreadsheet with departments, federal grant, and their matching grant, local matching grant that we have already agreed to fulfill if grants are approved? Just so that we have a better understanding moving forward, obviously, we're going to face a budget deficit in the coming year, years, and I want to be very fiscally prudent in understanding what local matches and where the money will be coming from, because those will be obligations if we do accept federal dollars.
More than, more than happy to do that.
And Mayor, just a point of clarification, there was not a required 10% match in this particular case. We decided to 10% match, we had that option. We decided to do that simply because we felt as a business perspective, from a business perspective, that would increase our possibility of getting funded, because, to your point, we're going to do this anyway. So, we felt that that 10% match made sense in this particular case. But I just wanted to make sure that everyone understood that that was not required.
If that can be reflected on the green sheet, that would be helpful, so that moving forward, it says each application has a 10% match from the city imposed by the city, not by the grant itself, correct?
It is, well, in this particular case, the grant did not require it, we, but it was an option. So we decided to, because we have funds for equipment replacement, and so we decided that it made more sense for us, we felt, in terms of actually getting this grant.
See no further questions for staff? We will open it up for public comment. Does anyone from the public want to speak? I see none, we'll bring it back to the bench. I see none, so I will move to approve the grant application and acceptance of the award if we receive the award. Second. Motion and a second, any further discussion? I see none, Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Motion passes seven zero. Madam Clerk, please call the next item.
CON 2024-20, Amendment to CON 2012-21 to permit outdoor entertainment generally located approximately 700 feet east of North Tyler Road and north of West 21st Street North, 8558 West 21st Street North.
Good morning. Scott Wadel from the Planning Department, here to present this item. So, in this case, the applicant is requesting an amendment to an existing conditional use. They are requesting that amendment in order to allow for outdoor entertainment and dancing, and also to establish hours of operation for the outdoor entertainment. This item is being heard because protests have been submitted against the application. In terms of the request, the applicant has indicated they are requesting the conditional use modifications so that they can have outdoor entertainment, specifically bands, music, and dancing. The property, as you've heard, has an existing conditional use that allows for indoor entertainment and alcohol, which be classified as an entertainment establishment in the city under the new, under the current Unified Zoning Code definitions. In terms of the property, as you can see outlined here, property site is at 8558 West 21st Street. It consists of one parcel, it is just over one acre in size, it's currently zoned LC Limited Commercial, and developed with a commercial shopping center and related parking. The subject site is within a larger commercial shopping center. Property to the north is zoned SF5, Single Family Residential District, and developed with a golf course. Properties to the south, across West 21st Street, are zoned LC Limited Commercial District and GC General Commercial District, and are developed with fast food restaurant and a car rental facility. Properties to the east are zoned LC Limited Commercial, and are developed with a dance studio, a medical facility. Property to the west is zoned GC General Commercial, and developed with vehicle sales operation. In terms of the staff report, the staff report provides information about applicable screening requirements, which would be required to the north because it abuts SF5, Single Family Residential zoning. In terms of review, on May 23rd, the Planning Commission held a public hearing for this item, and recommended approval of the conditional use amendment, per staff recommendations. That vote was eight to two, one, with one abstention. Seventeen members of the public spoke on the application, some were in support, some were in opposition. Those in opposition expressed concerns regarding evening noise levels and public intoxication. On June 3rd, the District Advisory Board reviewed the request and recommended approval of the conditional use amendment. That vote was six, three, one, per the staff, and that recommendation for approval was per the staff recommendations, so both the MAPC and the DAB voted to recommend approval, per the staff recommendation. Multiple members of the public spoke at the DAB meeting with concerns regarding noise levels and, again, public intoxication. In terms of protest, 51 protest petitions were received against the requested amendment. None of those protest properties were within the protest area, so therefore, they represented 0% of the protest area, and this request may be approved with a simple majority vote. In terms of council action, it is recommended that the city council adopt the findings of the Planning Commission, approve the amendments to the conditional use, authorize the necessary signatures, and instruct the city clerk to publish a resolution after approval, and again, that requires just a simple majority of four of seven votes. Alternatives include the following: you can override the MAPC, adopt alternative findings, and deny the conditional use, which requires five of seven votes, or as always, you can return the case to the Planning Commission for additional consideration, which requires just a simple majority. And just a quick note about process, city council policies at the public hearing for planning agenda items occurs at the Planning Commission meeting. According to the policy, the city council does not typically receive public comments on zoning items. So with that, I'll take you through some of the graphics and maps. So here's the aerial, that shows the subject site outlined in that bluish-green color. Here's the zoning map, which was discussed earlier. Here's the map from the comprehensive plan, which recommends new employment in this area. Here's a site plan that was submitted with the application. Here is the protest map, and you can see where the protests were located in the blue and the yellow. Here's photos from the site, and the surrounding area. One thing that I would like to mention is that there has been, there was a late submission on the part of the applicant, they did submit a revised site plan, which did not make it into the PowerPoint. That revised site plan shows the stage, a stage being located on the east side of their patio, more towards this location. And with that, I'll stand for any questions.
Councilmember Hoheisel.
Thank you, Mayor. Two quick questions here. One, can you describe the screening that is, I guess, part of the plan here?
Yes. So, I'll describe where the requirement comes from first, and then I will talk a little bit about how that would be implemented. So, attachment number two to the staff report includes applicants' requested revisions to conditions and staff modifications in red. So, what's coming to you is recommended by the MAPC, it includes everything in the black and the red on that page. In that page, it says, number three is that the applicant will adhere to the screening requirements of the Unified Zoning Code and the landscape buffer requirements of the Wichita landscape ordinance around the patio. So, in terms of the requirement then, so there would be screening that would be needed along the property line of this property where it abuts SF5, Single Family Zoned property, which is the golf course to the north. And the screening would need to be a minimum of six feet in height, and there are material standards that are identified in the zoning code, but typically, that's done through a wooden screening fence.
Okay, a second question is, say this item is approved, and there are some noise complaints coming from some of the neighbors, can you walk us through the process as to what happens in regards to those noise complaints? We come out, do we measure the decibel level, et cetera?
Okay. So, there are two standards that would apply in terms of the noise. The first one would be found in the conditions, which is the same as what's listed in the municipal code, so those are the two sources of the regulations. One is the conditions of the conditional use, which match what's in the municipal code, and the second is the municipal code. And that standard, it's an amount of decibels, five decibels, above normal background noise. Now, that would be measured, my understanding is, that would be measured by the police department, or we have another instrument that will measure that in another department, the housing department, is my understanding. So staff would have to go out and observe that, measure that. Then, if it's confirmed that it exceeds the allowed amount, then there would be a letter that would be submitted, and we would call the property owner to let them know that they are in violation. They would receive a notice of violation, which is a formal letter indicating they've violated the zoning code, and after that, they would have an amount of time to correct that, to ensure that they're not exceeding that. If they continue to exceed it, then there would be enforcement action taken, which typically results in taking them to court and getting a court orders from there.
Would they be in danger of losing their entertainment license?
Yes. If we find that they're in violation of the conditions of the conditional use, the zoning administrator can find that they're in violation, and then, with the planning director, declare the conditional use null and void, and that is identified as number eight on the conditions of the conditional use.
And what is a decibel level?
It's five decibels above, and it says, how it's measured, it's five, but it's five decibels over the normal background noise.
So, normal background noise, is that like 55 decibels, or?
I don't know, I can't, I can't say at this point, but I would, what I would envision happen is that people would take the instrument out, they would get the measurement, and then if a band or music starts up, then they would have that measurement as well.
Thank you.
Councilmember Johnston.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Scott. Just clarification, so you said the newly submitted site plan moves that stage from the west side to the east side?
That is correct, sir.
And does it, being on the east side, so it faces away from those homes, that would be impacted?
That is correct, and that is shown as, I believe it's page four on your attachments, there are two site plans, you'll see the original, and then if you flip, you'll see the other one, and yes, I believe that that is the intent.
Okay, and then the, and the screening would go around that to help with some of the noise concerns?
At this point, the applicant on this site plan has identified screening trees. I would point out, though, that as a condition of the conditional use, they, again, would be required to provide the screening per the Unified Zoning Code, which would require a fence along the property line.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Glasgow.
Councilman Johnson asked my question about the stage, but now that I'm looking at this map, I do have one quick question. I see the proposed six-foot decorative screening fence around just the new proposed stage area. You had stated around the entire property line, is that going to extend down the entire line, or just the red line that's displayed on page four?
It would be along the property line. My understanding is that the applicant's preference of it would be to have it be the shorter red line, but at this point, it would be required along the property line.
So staff's recommendation is down the entire property line, applicant has submitted this as requesting of just that component?
They, that is their preference, but the requirement that's in page, on page two of the attachments is that the applicant will adhere to the screening requirements of the Unified Zoning Code and the landscape buffer requirements.
So it would take an amendment?
It, it would take additional action, yes, sir.
Can you explain also that public comment, the reason why public comment is allowed during this time?
Yes, I believe I can. It's been a policy that's been in place for quite some time, and I believe the background to that policy is simply that MAPC meetings where public comments are allowed take, they can go multiple hours, we can go beyond five o'clock, and start at 1:30, and so I, I believe that that's part of the reason for it, is because of the length of the meetings, what would result at the city council meetings.
Councilmember Johnston.
Thank you, Mayor. Scott, thanks for your proposal, talked to you a lot lately, so appreciate that. This is a very, very hard decision, it's magnified by some loud concerts in 2022, especially the one on July 23rd of 2022, where a very large and, maybe, they don't use very nice words, played, and, and way past midnight, and I, I appreciate that, and, and I don't think that's a lot, not good, just very not good. The west side of Wichita does not have a lot of places for entertainment, which makes a community alive and vibrant. I've received many emails, about half for and about half against, so I'm going to make at least half the people angry at me. Maybe if I make everybody angry, it might be the best resolution, could be. Enforcement, it's a long process, I understand that, but there are things in place for enforcement, so we can do that. Councilman Glasgow and I went there last night, took my personal boombox, put it as loud as I could, and we, we measured it, and there was a strong south, southeast wind last night, and we even pointed towards the houses, and we could not hear it. I realize that's not a hard-driving drumset bass, I realize that, which I don't think the applicant is wanting to do at this point, anyway. I'd, I'd point out that you say the 0% of the protests are in the 500-feet area?
It's 200 feet.
200 feet?
Shown on this illustration, and yes, sir.
Okay. And then the fairway and the green are actually zoned, single-family housing.
They are, correct.
So if a developer wanted to put a street down there, sell lots, they could do that, at this point in time.
There would be nothing to prevent that, they'd have to repl- They'd have to replat the property.
Replat the property, and they wouldn't have to go through the zoning.
Correct.
Okay. That was a surprise to me, so I'd be more worried about that than anything. Worked with the applicant, and, and they've agreed to put a eight-foot by eight-foot stage on the east side of the patio, facing west, towards where the old buses used to be. The eight-foot by eight-foot stage not be big enough for a loud drum set or bass. It'll be a one or two-person band that will be monitored, and I'm sure there'll be a lot of neighbors monitoring this also. I'd like it to where everyone is happy. I'm not sure everyone will be happy, but I think that's a resolution that the applicant can live with, and hopefully the neighbors can live with too, to keep the music softer. Regards to a wall, I won't address that, but there's a two-foot drop from the applicant's present patio to the property line. There's a two-foot stage. Now, you're four feet up on that wall, so you've only got screening of two feet from a six-foot wall. So I'm not sure that will do a lot of good in this case. I'm not saying put the wall or don't put the wall, but I don't think it'd do a lot of good. I think this solution will, will do a lot of good, keeping the music faced the opposite way. So I'd like to say this is a very, very tough, tough decision, and I'm going to put another option out there to make sure it's done that way, and approve the additional use with the modified conditions, which will require five of seven votes. I move to override the MAPC, approve the conditional use with the MAC, M-A-C, MAPC-recommended conditions with one change. I will read that in just a second. Place the ordinance on first reading, authorize the necessary signatures, and instruct the city clerk to publish the ordinance after approval of the second reading. Here's the change to the conditions. Outside entertainment, outdoor speakers and dancing is allowed during live music. The outdoor entertainment and speakers are allowed only from the stage constructed on the east side of the property. Stage on the east side of the property shall be shown and labeled on the approved site plan. The approved site plan shall also label the patio and garage. Any new outdoor locations for entertainment, patio, stage, or garage shall require an amendment to the conditional use. So that's what I'd like to present as a motion, and hopefully we can come to a resolution.
Councilmember Hoheisel.
Thank you, Mayor. So would present speakers still be allowed with those be grandfathered in under this amendment? Is that a question for legal, or is that something we kind of need to work with then?
Currently, outdoor entertainment, which includes loud amplified music that extends beyond the property line, is not allowed. So my understanding is that there would be no grandfathering on this. This simply only allows them to have those speakers and project that music from the stage area on the east side of the property.
Okay, because I, I think they may have already have speakers attached to the building on the outside up in the soffits and whatnot, or ambiance. So would this amendment mean they would have to remove those speakers or never use those speakers?
There is a slight nuance to this, and that is that ambient music, if it does not go beyond the property lines, does not qualify as entertainment, and so they are allowed to do that. However, if it, if it goes beyond the property lines, then it's classified as entertainment, and therefore would have to meet the conditions.
So if those speakers themselves, you cannot hear those particular speakers beyond the property line, that does not apply to this amendment?
I think, from my understanding, it would be good to get clarification from you on what you would like the intent to be. Would you like to allow for those speakers to provide ambient music, or would you like to prohibit it, to restrict the speakers only to be where the east stage is located?
That I believe is...
I will speak to that. I would like to allow the ambient speakers as they are now. I do not want those ambient speakers hooked up to music on the stage. When live music is on the stage, only the speakers on the stage will be pointed west, away from the houses.
Councilmember Tuttle.
Thank you. Councilmember Johnson, can you just kind of synthesize what your statement was? I'm a very visual learner, and I don't have it in front of me, so in essence, what are you adding as an amendment? Just so I understand.
I'm adding that they are allowed to build an eight-foot by eight-foot stage on the east side of the property, so as to allow the musicians to be on that stage, have the speakers on that stage facing west. So that, that would be the change. As opposed to now, there's a very large stage on the west that tends to face more towards the, the fairway and the houses, and the music carries a lot louder. And a larger stage allows for bass and drums and louder instruments.
So may I ask a clarifying question? There's a stage there now on the west side, correct? So that stage can't be utilized for live music, is that my understanding?
That is correct.
So only this stage on the east?
Only this stage on the east.
And then one more question, if that's okay, just to make sure I understand. So there are speakers affixed to the building now, that maybe like on a Tuesday night is playing, you know, some kind of soundtrack. It's not live music, right? Pre-recorded music, that can continue?
Yes.
But those speakers could not be utilized when there's live music? Like, they couldn't somehow, I don't, I don't know that much about audio, but I mean, they couldn't be piped into the, the speakers on the stage, correct?
That is the intent, yes.
Okay, thank you very much.
Councilmember Glasscock.
Councilman Tuttle asked the questions. I'll go to him.
So we have a motion?
Second.
And a second. Any further discussion?
Please, Councilmember Johnson, if I may. Before you make the motion, is it also your intent that the, you find that the additional conditions would help reduce potential negative impacts to your properties?
Yes. Yes, definitely.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? I see none. Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Motion passes 7-0. Madam Clerk, please call the next item.
PUD 2024-8, zone change request in the city from SF5, single-family residential to TF3, two-family residential district, to planned unit development, to create Balmin Fifth Edition, number 127, generally located on the east side of South Maze Road, approximately one-quarter mile north of West 31st Street South.
Scott Wadel again from the Planning Department. For this item, the applicant is requesting to rezone the property from TF3, two-family district to planned unit development, which is custom zoning. This item is being heard for one reason, and that is because one protest was submitted against the application. In terms of the request, the applicant has indicated that they are requesting the rezoning in order to allow for the property to be developed with duplexes and single-family dwelling units. The custom zoning would allow single-family units to be placed on individual lots with a minimum size of 3,000 square feet, and this is because the developer has in the past, and would like to on this property, built what they call duplexes that are unattached, which are two single-family units right next to each other on the same lot, and then wants the ability to split that lot to create separate lots in that instance. So it's a little bit unique, but we have seen it a couple ti, at least a couple times before. In terms of the property, the site is generally located east of Maze Road and north of west, of, south 31st Street. Subject site is made up of one parcel. It's approximately 56.6 acres in size, as you heard, currently zoned TF3, and is currently in agricultural and green space uses, as you can see on this aerial. In terms of the context for the area, properties to the north are zoned SF5, and are currently being, are developed with single-family homes. Or no, they're in the process of constructing those, my apologies. Properties to the south are located in the unincorporated county, zoned SF20, and are developed with single-family dwellings and in use as agricultural fields. Property to the east is zoned SF5, and is undeveloped and owned by the Wichita Airport Authority. Property to the west, across South Maze Road, zoned SF5 and TF3, and developed with single-family dwellings and duplexes. In terms of the staff report, the staff report provides information about development standards and the zoning parcels that are proposed as part of the PUD. In terms of review, on May 23rd, the Planning Commission held a public hearing for this item, recommended approval unanimously 11 to 0 per the staff recommendations. There were no public comments. On June 3rd, the DAB recommended approval. That vote was 6 to 2, and they voted to recommend approval per the staff recommendation. There was no public comment. As indicated earlier, one protest petition was received. It was outside of the protest area, and therefore does not count towards the 20% threshold. In terms of council action, it is recommended the city council adopt the findings of the Planning Commission and approve the requested zone change, place the ordinance on the first reading, authorize necessary signatures, instruct the city clerk to publish the ordinance after approval on a second reading. Alternatives include the following: you can override the Planning Commission, adopt alternative findings, and deny the rezoning request, or as always, you can return the keys to the Planning Commission for additional consideration. That requires four out of seven votes. And just a quick note on process, that public comment takes place typically at the Planning Commission. So with that, I'll take you through some of the graphics. So here's the zoning map, as we, was described earlier. Here's the map from the comprehensive plan, showing new residentials recommended in the area. Here's the illustration that was submitted or as part of the PUD application. Here's the protest map, again, showing the protest, which is that blue square to the north of the protest area line. Here are photos from the site and the surrounding area. And with that, I'll stand for any questions.
Any questions for staff? I see none. This resides in Councilmember Glasscock's district.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, with a motion to approve based on staff's recommendations.
Second. Motion and a second. Any further discussion? I see none. Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Motion passes 7-0. Madam Clerk, please call the next item.
VAC 2024-25, request in the city to vacate a portion of platted setback, generally located one block south of West Maple Street and within one-quarter mile west of South 151st Street West, 355 South Wind Rose Lake Drive.
Scott Wadel again from the Planning Department. This one is a, a note on this one, it's a little bit unusual because it's a vacation case. You typically don't hear vacation cases, so there's a little bit of nuance to this, so I'll take you through that. In terms of this case, the applicant is requesting to vacate this, the front 10 feet of the 30-foot platted front setback along South Wind Rose Lake Drive. So you can see it here, the area for the, the request of vacation is outlined in the bold black line. This item is being heard because at the June 18th city council meeting, this item was deferred to today's meeting. In terms of the request, the applicant has indicated that they are requesting the vacation in order to allow for the construction of a detached garage by creating more buildable space on the property, because they are prohibited from putting up a structure or a building in that front setback. So they're trying to vacate a portion of it, so they can move that proposed building closer to the street. In terms of the property, the site is located at 355 South Wind Rose Lake Drive, which is generally located one block south of Maple Street and west of South 151st Street. The subject site is made up of one parcel, is approximately 0.56 acres in size, zoned SF5, single-family, and currently developed with a single-family house. The staff report provides information about utilities and input from various utility and service providers, and I would summarize that by saying overall, there did not seem to be concerns with it. However, Evergy did point out that they do have equipment in the area, and if that needs to be relocated, then that would be at the applicant's expense, and the applicant is aware of that. In terms of review, on May 23rd, the Planning Commission held the public hearing for this item and voted 9 to 2 to recommend approval of the vacation request. Seven members of the public spoke in opposition to this request at both the MAPC meeting and at their prior MAPC subdivision and utility advisory board. In general, the concerns were regarding the possible negative visual impact. The proposed structure could have possible devaluation of property, safety implications with the sightlines along the street, and whether the proposed architecture of the building would fit in with the character of the neighborhood. In response, at the subdivision meeting, traffic engineering commented on the sightlines and indicated that there would be no detrimental effects. Members of the public had expressed, as indicated, had expressed concerns with the exterior appearance. I would just note that the existing HOA has covenants with architectural controls. Those controls are a private matter, and it is the HOA's responsibility to enforce its covenants. It's not something the city's involved in. No valid objections were filed with the city clerk on this case. So in terms of recommended action, it is recommended the city council follow the recommendation of the Planning Commission, approve the vacation order, and that requires just a simple majority, and then authorize the necessary signatures. Alternatives include the following: you can deny the requested vacation case, and because this is not a zoning case, that only requires a simple majority of four out of seven, or as always, you can return the case to the Planning Commission for additional consideration. And the same typical note about processes, that public comments are received and taken at the Planning Commission meeting. So with that, I'll take you through the graphics and then stand for questions. So again, here's the area that's proposed to be vacated, also showing utility lines in the area. This is a graphic that was submitted with the application, showing a rough idea of where the proposed garage would go. And that's all that we have, so with that, I'll stand for any questions.
I see no questions. This resides in Councilmember Glasscock's district.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I've had ex parte communication with both the applicant, the Neighbor Association. I've also heard from probably 20 different neighbors, so nearly half of the neighborhood, about concerns regarding this property. I know we had deferred it to this. I've been out to the property once, met with the Neighbor Association and the neighborhood at different time, and I also have concerns, in particular, about the abutting in front of the house at this location. You'll see from this graphic how it stands out in front of the house. Another concern I have is regarding, can we go back one slide?
Sure.
Maybe flip back and forth. So the entire red line is where they're requesting the vacation of the property, and then can you go to the other slide? They're only needing a sliver of the vacation to be able to extend where they want the garage, and so I have concerns of the entire vacation versus what they're just wanting to extend. And so with those concerns, with the conversations, and I've talked to both the applicant about it, and also the Neighbor Association about these concerns, I move that we deny the application. In support of the motion, I offer the following determination, that the requested vacation would injure or endanger the private property rights of property owners in the area. This is because putting a structure this close to the right-of-way would be significantly out of character for the area and consistent with the requirements placed on the surrounding properties. I will also note that I may have come to a different conclusion or to different termination if the vacation request had just been for that smaller area and specific location identified with a survey. And so I've talked to the applicant about the possibility of a survey, and will be following up with that as well, in that if they choose to maybe resubmit the application with a survey identifying the exact parcel that they would need to vacate instead of the entire area. So that is my motion.
Second. Motion and a second. Any further discussion? I see none. Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Motion passes 7-0. Madam Clerk, please call the next item.
Councilmember Appointments and Comments.
We'll start with appointments with Councilmember Glasscock.
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to appoint Ebony Clemmons to the Wichita Airport Advisory Board. This is an appointment from the County Commission. I believe that we just have to ratify the appointment. appointment.
Councilmember Johnston.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to point Dennis Cleary to the Ethics Advisory Board.
Before we do that, may I please ask law to chime in regarding several of our boards require background checks? Can you please remind the community which boards they are and why there is that process?
Certainly. Mayor, we have requirements under the ordinance for the Citizens Review Board and for the Ethics Advisory Board. Those are the two that come to mind, if there's another one I'm forgetting. So the motions are subject to approval of a successful background check and other requirements of the ordinance.
Thank you. Councilmember Johnston.
Thank you, Mayor. I've delayed his appointment pending that background check, and he has passed, and so I'm asking to point him to the board now, so thank you.
Thank you. I see no further appointments. I motion to approve the appointments. Second. Motion and a second. Any further discussion? I see none. Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Motion passes seven-zero. It's now time for Councilmember Comments. Councilmember Johnson.
Thanks, Mayor. Just want to remind the public that Tuesday, July 16th, is the deadline to register to vote for the upcoming primary election. Make sure you're registered.
Vice Mayor Ballard.
Thank you, Mayor. I would just like to thank staff and my colleagues and everyone that was here and has contributed over the last several weeks with the discussion for the MAC. Also, people that helped me knock doors and answered all of the questions, came to the community meetings. Really tough conversations to have, but for the betterment of our community, it was conversations that we needed to have, so thanks again.
I'll add just one last one. I want to invite the community to join Councilmember Houheisel on Saturday, July 13th, for the second Unity in the Community Rally for Peace in Wichita to reduce violence. The first one was held in Councilmember Johnson through his leadership with the Greater Wichita Municipal League. So again, thank you for your leadership, Councilmember Houheisel, for District 3's unity in the community. And with that, I motion that we adjourn today's meeting.
Second. Motion and a second. We're just going to open up the roll. Motion passes seven-zero. Have a great day, everyone.